Then it is 5:30 according to my clock. So we will begin our workshop for September 3rd, 2019. You can all please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could just take a moment, preserve some silence and reflection, please. Thank you. All right, next item is to excuse the absences of Congress members Zoe in 19. All right, so then the first order of real business. I heard from previous mayor that there is nothing more special to do as a mayor than to recognize our dedicated employees. So I have this opportunity as my first action, which I've done as mayor in the meeting, to recognize an outstanding one. So I'd love to have Wade hook these come up. I'm gonna go here.
Are you gonna take a picture?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So I'd like to recognize Wade for 30 years of dedicated service to the City of College Place. I understand that you are responsible for managing much of our crews and any contractors and that you've been very in our cars project, Fortin Academy, and our C Street. So thank you very much for your dedication and for your wonderful skills that you bring. And I look forward to what more you're going to give to the city in the future.
I'm delighted.
Thank you.
Wait, picture?
Picture. Okay, guys, thank you.
Thanks, Wade.
Thanks.
I'd shake your hand as well, but I've been sick.
I think he'll appreciate that.
Where's our audience tonight? We can talk about anything.
Well, right now, we're gonna talk about the fiscal year 2020 budget. We've got your picture over there, and it should work for it as soon as I get it up and running. It must be a long one.
It's not too long. Internet seems to be going slow.
Right, the Word docs is loading.
Mind the stall as well.
I should have had his wife come up with him and take a picture of his wife.
What is loading, slowly? It appears to be pretty large, 30 some meg, so there it goes.
Okay, so just, this is setting the stage for general budget development. Last year, we did this condensed in a workshop in October, and it went very, very long. So this is like in two parts. This is what we've done in general forecast of things. And then when we get into October, that's when you'll see the department budget. How's your plan? We just lead to shorter presentations. So in Word docs, you'll see a couple documents, please take a look at. MRSD Municipal Research Services Center, they have like a fiscal year 2020 budget suggestions book. So that's attached, as well as a budget nuts and bolts PowerPoint that you definitely see has. And then also, there's a salary survey. We did comparable cities, both through non-represented department heads and then police officers. Police officers one, I just uploaded in there a little bit earlier today. There's essentially mixed news about our positions. For most department heads, we actually are on the higher end, like the middle of the spectrum, which is a good thing. Police department, as far as police officers, and then the sergeants, not so much. So that's a challenge. And keep in mind then with the sergeants, with the contract you all heard a couple council meetings ago, as the police officers get increases in pay, they'll increase commensurate with that to maintain that 16% like difference. So over time, it's gonna improve. I'm just saying that to say that as we're getting into union negotiations this year, it's gonna be a bit of a climb that I'm right now trying to figure out because we're on the lower end of the spectrum there.
And so that, I'm sorry, well, those, are those conversations that we need to have about how that fits with the budget or are there any stuff that you've taken into consideration as you would say are going to be putting these numbers together?
Well, we're just starting to put the numbers together for the budget. And then the key thing is that the police union, they have yet to approve yet. So I'm working with them. I'm establishing time to start negotiating because right now, I don't really know what their request is.
Oh, okay.
So a little bit dark on that, but just looking at our comparables cities.
Right.
I'm just forecasting that it's probably gonna be a significant request.
Right, okay, but we knew that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but after checking, we really know now because it's a significant difference. Even before taking into account that this year, all the comparable communities, they're all going to actually a police union negotiations this year as well. So they'll even be more ahead of us starting in next year.
Moving target, huh?
Exactly.
So Mike, just one of the obvious points here is it's per officer pay, which you're discussing right now.
Yeah.
On top of that is officer ratios. And so, which we wanted to, you know, look at and address as we move forward too. So yeah, it's a double whammy.
So multiple cheap ones or something?
Yeah, exactly. Which luckily is we've been adding officers. We've been doing better on the ratio side. So we aren't as dire and predicamental. We were, let's say, two and a half years ago. Actually, we're still pretty good there. But now, it's more so getting the pay up to where everyone else is at.
That's cool. That's good to know. Good to know. Thanks, Mike.
When was the last time we, we either negotiated the police officers summary?
It was done almost three years ago. That was actually one of the first things I did when I started here.
And where were we then?
Then, we were actually in the middle of the pack. And a bunch of the union contracts that were being negotiated at that time actually went well over like the new year. And many of them went to arbitration in several of the communities. Luckily, ours didn't do that, but ended up happening in the arbitration with several of the communities is they ended up pretty far ahead. We were in the middle of the pack to pretty far down.
Okay.
Yep. So vision, strategic plan, that's a vision about increasing volunteerism and good economic network and partnering with the public schools and private. That's our mission. Value is open and honest, cooperation respects service and diversity. And this is a lot to strategic planning, and this was reviewed earlier in the year. And this is really what governs essentially as we develop our budget document, what falls into essentially the five buckets. The resource development, cooperation, connection, infrastructure investment, planning for prosperity, and then optimal operation.
That was a new picture, Mike.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I put new pictures in.
It's only a few weeks old.
Yeah, the new V line. Yeah, okay, as I was bicycling around. So just briefly go over accomplishments in the various departments. And you can all read this. I'll cover the important points. So youth recreation program, that's been going at capacity, so very successful. Again, this year, micro business assistance program, that's going good. The electric vehicle charger finally got built, so that was good. I was wondering if that would happen. Fire and police union contract negotiations, those were successfully wrapped up and were good there for three and four years respectively. You saw the recreation event strategy was provided before you. Our community events continue to grow. Utility code, that was revised on many brands. Ford Community Development, several things, Davis Days is going. And the apartments at the top of the hill near V line, we got plans for that. Villages of Fort Walla Walla, we're actually finally getting those out now since they've turned in the revisions. So that is happening. They just needed to understand Washington building standards. And the Hoppy, that is slated for around the December opening. Stone Creek Development, the April Island is ongoing. The additional Park at Homestead, that's being worked on now. Annexations on Spitzembergen 8, and then the development code update, which you will all see shortly, and there's quite a bit of business activity. Fire department, additional staff since the ambulance has been going. The regional fire study, which is ongoing, kitchen remodel. Police department, we actually have the security camera over lines part now. That's been very successful. The special enforcement officer, folks have been appreciating that, that we've been enforcing the codes. We're also in that special investigations unit now with the tri-cities and the other counties. Brian Fortin is our detective. And then we also backfilled the records board, and we moved toward the vehicle police.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Did they even hire someone for that fire position?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we've been doing really good there. And right now, we're at about, I would say, half of what we need for the other fire position. However, what's gonna be coming before you is that since we're about our year anniversary for having the ambulance, we now qualify for that G E M T, that ground emergency medical transport. And it's like this weird like reimbursement scheme thing that the state has. So, well, that's what it is, is ask anyone to explain it to you if they can. It's just you get money from it, so that's good. So we were putting in the application for that, and most of the cities have been participating in G E M T. They've been about our size on the average, have been getting around 70, 80,000 a year from that. It's another way of covering Medicaid reimbursement disbursement. So we should have enough, I would expect for.
Who's, who is David Meyer?
David, he actually was another, he was one of our volunteers and then he.
Isn't that a name?
Troy Lee.
Yeah, Troy.
Troy Williams.
Oh, yeah. For Public Works, Stormwater Utility, Rob started as our engineering technician. The stormwater plan, we're wrapping that up. And then our street sweeper, that's actually here. Southwest Couch Place, the trunk sewer, we'll talk about that a little bit, but that's moving. Also, C Street reconstruction, making sure our home number three is working. The water meter replacements, that's about wrapped up now. And then LED, LED street lamp conversions, all the Pacific Power and REA within whole lamps are converted. And the remaining city ones are in the process as we have the staff to do that. Also, the wastewater tree farm, again, they updated that. And then working on the additional land that held at the wastewater treatment plant. Good news today on that, I found out the DNR board, they actually approved it. So that's a done deal now.
Approved the, uh.
Acquisition?
Yeah.
Of the land?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, the 80 acres, they approved it, so.
Wow.
So.
Excellent.
After we pay, right?
Yeah, after we, but we own it, and they actually signed it, so we're all good there.
The county isn't going to interpret that as we have more commercial property available now, right?
Yeah.
Mike, has that new streets, a lot of information come out, I assume, pretty quickly. That new street sweeper, is it, was it designed or can it handle the bike lanes? Or what are your thoughts on that?
We have, we have a skid steer out at the wastewater treatment plant that we can truck to those lanes and clean it that way. The problem is because we have like the dividers in the roadway, you can't really fit the commercial street sweeper in there.
I didn't know if there was an attachment or something, but.
Yeah, so it really has to be a skid steer with an attachment.
Yeah, I ride through there quite a bit now, and I was thinking as we extend it, you know, it'll be, you know, it's not, it's not a huge issue right now. It's just that it'll, it'll become more of an issue maybe as that's extended.
It's, it's a bit of an issue because as you have the traffic and Fortin Academy Way cleaned up, you do have like junk that migrates its way into those bike lanes. So that is gonna be a little bit more of an issue as we develop that network, so.
Did you say we had one or needed to get one?
We have, we have a skid steer out at the wastewater treatment plant with an attachment that is on the capital, the equipment replacement plant. Get it replaced in like about two years, I believe. It's older model, so of course, yeah.
Question, kind of unrelated, but on Fortin Academy Way, the safety poles there, are those required or are those elective that we put in?
Those are required as part of the grant.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I get a lot of questions about that because aesthetically, they aren't the bravest.
What are, are you talking about those things that divide the bike lane and have trees?
Yeah.
Makes nice swallon, of course.
Yeah.
If you're into rollerblading.
With bikes.
Where do you see the silver lining there?
Put it this way, though, per the grant agreement, and I did this in the past in Goldfax, and they were cool with it. Believe it or not, like in about three years, if it isn't working or stuff, they are open to cities changing how their roads is designed at that point in time. So from the time it was closed out, once you're out like three years, you can make changes. Something to consider. So current, current economics just showing things are going. Interest rates are falling, so 5% last year, 328% now. Inflation's down a bit. Unemployment, that's going up a bit from 4.2 to 4.4%. Housing prices are up quite a bit. In first quarter 2014, it was 175,000. First quarter this year, just over 241,000. So it's definitely climbed a bit.
That's, is it median or average?
Yeah. Yeah. This is the, yeah.
Average?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So looking at how everyone's forecasting, they're saying there's gonna be market adjustments sometime in later 2020, early 2021. So we have to be aware of that. We do have aging infrastructure, although we are starting to work our way down the list, which is nice. Our local streets, those are ones that are most of a challenge to replace since I can't really get state grant funds for that. And then just figuring out other issues with our various utility systems. Because water system, for instance, the next thing after we wrap up the wells is really the storage. Because for a, for a city our size typically, it's gonna have about roughly 48 hours on hand of water. And with our two tanks over off of Woodman, plus the elevated tank, we have 20 hours. So we do need additional water storage.
Mike, how are the, how are the state, Washington state receipts going right now with sales tax? Have you, you may not know the answer to this. I don't expect you to know the answer to everything that comes out of there. But what are your, is it pretty, is it accelerating staying? The reason I ask, I just heard today that the Community College had a $2.7 million shortfall.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to figure out if that was related to their expense or, and once again, we may not know. Or was it declining revenues? I don't.
It was actually, it was not more so expensive in many regards. Because with our sales taxes, actually been a little bit up. And I think that's attributable, in fact, that came earlier than ShopCo closed. The unfortunate part about that too is also the police calls have also shut up since that time as well.
So related question, how, do we know yet? We barely know, I guess, from August, how we were affected by the July mud change for not having the organization for sales tax?
I haven't really been able to see the data yet to show which way it's going.
It's still really fresh. It's just due at the end of our.
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna need at least two more months there to really make it discernible. See where it's at.
Okay.
Yeah. So water system, just doing the neighborhood lines, water storage, your wastewater system. We're doing the engineering on the trunk line, but building it so we can get the big boxes looking. And then the storm system, really implementing that plan, which will be coming your way. Consumer sentiment, this is our university in Michigan, just showing how folks feel about the academy. It was going up, it's just going down a little bit this year. But this is just showing the 50-year average as well. So just something to keep in mind.
The economists are busy.
Yeah. Expected change in prices in these years, went down a little bit, just climbing a little bit upright now. And then the retail sales, since county centers around and more people are staying around here, that is climbing, so that's a good one. And as businesses continue to locate here, so this metric is really good. Median home prices, this is the median home price thing of the, they have the board plugs out. So it dipped a little bit, but still significant increases. And then housing affordability index, you can see that as well. Just the, just being able for homes, a bit of a challenge, although there's increasing a little bit. City services survey, there's a hyperlink sent out where you can see the real-time data behind it. I just provided a couple of the interesting points of the, that I thought. So in 2018, there's 101 responses. This year, there's 118 difference. This year too, is we also put out a survey in Spanish as well. So there, so there were another folks that filled out as well.
Were there? How many?
About roughly 17, so.
Oh, wow.
So I'm considering, I mean, it's a pretty textbook.
I can just see English.
So. So our, just put in perspective, 118 responses. Population this year is just shy of 9,600. So that's a response rate of 1.23%. Just having this via flyer and then survey monkey and social media, that's about on par. That's about the percentage we get in Goldfax, so that doesn't surprise me. The highest number of respondents, as far as living in the city, is between one and five years, 37.5%. Largest age group actually shifted this year from last year. Last year, it was actually the age group between 35 and 44. This year, it was 45 and 54. The owner renter split was 73, 26. Highest response areas is basically between Couch, Large, Fort, and 12. Just shy of 15%, followed by Harrison Creek Heights, and then Villages of Harrison Creek. And you can see all survey results via the hyperlink. So net promoter score, zeros beyond 10 is good. When you're anywhere above seven, it's considered good. People talk positively about you, usually around the seven to eight mark. Then your detractors are basically five and below. That's typically 101 level of what that net promoter score means. So overall performance is 6.86. And then just going from highest to lowest, community events, folks really like that. It's 7.56, followed by garbage, fire department, administration, police department, court, community development, and then it goes on from there.
Can you, can I, sorry, can you go back? You said that above seven is good?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
So we have three above seven?
Yeah. And then anything below five is like detractors.
So we did okay for that?
Yeah.
I did notice on a number of those other ones, people put, you know, either no opinion or did not know because we may have not had interaction with those departments.
Exactly. Yep. Top budget priorities, folks that completed the survey could indicate what their priorities were for funding in the budget. So top one was police and crime prevention, just shy of 59%.
So it's, yeah, do we use that as our, part of our rationale for the pay if we want to keep our house?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I view, I view this as a guiding indicator where everybody sees their priorities, so, yeah.
Where they want.
Mike, what was, what was the timing on this survey?
The timing on the survey has been out the last like two months.
Two months?
Yeah. And then we had the ads going on Facebook, there were flyers, and Rogers Bakery next door, Andy's Market, the universities.
So it was before the, the library, the positive library vote, okay?
And then it was available until last week too, because I advertised it. And people, there is actually a, after I advertised it, again, were people.
Oh, okay.
So it's been out the last two months.
Oh, good.
So yeah, police is top, economic development, that is just shy of 35%. Parks is 33, utility infrastructure, and then ambulance, and affordable housing and community events, and then fire department. So what's interesting in the all-in-one then, this year's services, and what folks want to see for next year is folks really like the community events. They have a pretty high percentage on both sides.
Because they weren't there, how common would it be that we shouldn't do those anymore? We don't have.
Well, you always have our flyers, so.
God, I'm just kidding.
I, I, I mean, I, I mean, it's just like when you look at the ratings here, like code enforcement's at 19%. And if you look at some of the results, there's, there's a person that talks about brother and brother issues, just police, fire, and then utility, and then utilities. But then by and large, if you look at the other responses and people like the neighborhood frontline, it was answered.
No, wait, what was that, this one? How did you, what is your primary source of information for finding out what's going on with College Place City Government? And their answer was, I'm not kidding you, I have a good relationship with my.
I know, I saw.
Who is that?
I don't know. Well, I don't know, it's anonymous, you can't see.
Cool.
So, but, but, but that just goes to show you sometimes you get your detractors, but by enlargers, people do like code enforcement. Considering we're only in our second year, recreation programs has been a pretty decent pull as well. For most staffing changes, and we're gonna get into this a little bit in the next presentation, but there is, there has been a lot of shop one going on. So stormwater, we remain to do that this year. So the utility worker, the engineering, police department, we had the retirements of the detective records board, and then we have an officer, and then our special enforcement officer. And then in the finance department, we have the deputy quarter. So, and the duration that could go on? Oh, okay, so. We have the P D F pad a little bit more than, yeah. I know, I. Well, yeah, well, actually, I didn't know. Yeah, I was gonna say, my points will just be in succession, won't have any power points on. I can do that one. So is there any questions on just overview of that? Is everything budget calendar? This is just providing where we're at and where we're going. The department had budget proposals as we get into October, very similar to last year. And then you will also see a six-year capital facility, equipment replacement, and then IT plan as well. So it'll go very similar to last year. And then per statute, the budget has to be approved sometime December, so. So you saw draft budget calendar in the source documents.
Just a couple of questions, Mike, you may be discussing these later, I apologize if I'm a little premature. There was some discussion about going to a biannual budget?
Yeah.
I may have said that wrong, what are your thoughts on that right now, or? I mean, we probably won't do it this year, obviously, but.
Well, I think that that'd be very valuable, was you can do long-term planning. That's a moot point this year though, not only because of the changeover, but per state statute, you actually can't do it out of years, even if you wanted to. So it's actually uneven years, so we would have to make that determination next year in 2020 for 2021 and beyond. But the cities I've talked to that have done that, they find that valuable, because it just helps with longer-term forecasting, and then move the money around as various items occur.
Yeah. Okay. One question I had, in the past, over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of issues with setting water rates. We've done a lot of work with that, you know, we've tried to fund some of our revenue bonds. I don't, we're probably not looking at a lot of that in this next year. Things are, I know we have them stepping at a certain, you know, rate or whatever you want to call it going forward. But other than that, there's really nothing on the horizon as far as new funding changes when it comes to the kind of, I'd call it bread and butter issues, as far as water rates, wastewater. Most of those are pretty standard, other than some inflationary impact.
Well, I mean, they're only the increases because we do have the deferments on the neighborhood lines. Like we're trying to get to the sewer lining, which that helps with the integrity of your wastewater lines. And then, as I alluded to earlier, with the water system, water storage is a significant issue, and those are very expensive. I mean, a bill of half million gallon storage tank that alone runs about 700,000.
Would that be this, next year, or would that be, or what are your thoughts on?
My belief on that would be, we would probably have another year of significant capital, not next year, but in 2021.
Okay.
I do think that in 2020 though, we need to be doing the engineering behind it. So that way, we have solid plans, and we can go to the grant teny agencies for 2021 with a plan, and then get the various funding for it. The other thing we need to consider over time as well, is an additional well, because I sent out a little survey of some of our comparable communities. And when you look at our population density versus the number of drinking water wells, we're getting brand new wells. But keep in mind, they have like Cheney, Broadway Heights, like a lot of them have like seven or eight wells. So, and they aren't, they don't produce as much as like our wells do, but still the counter to that is if the home goes down, it's a crisis. Whereas over here, if home goes down, that's a third of the life of your potential capacity.
So, you know, new initiatives, but existing rates will just happen inflationary, you know, the ones that will be, yeah. Last question, real quickly, recycling, it's kind of a soft spot that I have, I think, when, you know, when we had to deal away with that. Have any discussions with them, has the market stabilized at all? I'm reading articles in the big newspapers that a lot of recycling has turned back into the US, and there's US companies now that are handling a lot of the recycling that was going to China before. Now we're talking about macro 30,000-foot, you know, things, but what are your, in the near future, being able to, I'm not saying to reinstitute it, but at least maybe begin the conversation, or what are your thoughts on that?
I've been talking to Basin Disposal about that. The markets on there are very volatile still. The one thing is, that which I find interesting, the city of Spokane, they're actually offering a waste-to-energy plant that the city built up there to maybe handle more of that. So I know Basin is looking at potentially partnering with them, where maybe they could do something with the recyclables. However, talking with Derek, because Walt Wallace is still doing recycling. However, their recycling is still doing the round trip with going to Tacoma, and then on a train to the Landflow over in Arlington, Oregon, which is actually counter to recycling, but that's.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Any more questions?
I have a question, but I'm just gonna reiterate that I think you can admire the cycling program, and start to get back into it, be helpful.
Yep. Okay, so Public Works succession plan, I wanted to get a little into this. Paul Hartwig, who's been our Public Works Director, and been in Public Works Department for around 45 years, he's planning on retiring toward the end of next year. So we've been working together and figuring out a game plan going forward, then how to essentially run the operations of that department. So a couple of questions that need to be answered, is essentially how can it be modified to promote leadership and efficiency? And then also scaling up our folks. So we basically have a linear layout where folks are acquiring up the organizational ladder and stay here, and we don't lose them, and then we have issues. What opportunities, how do we prepare for the succession? And then another issue as well, that's interesting, when you look at comparable cities, is that typically the engineering department isn't a standalone department. It's integrated as a function of Public Works, or it's a division. That's a little bit rare, like we've had it where essentially it's a standalone department. So this is just the existing hierarchy right now, which is Paul is Public Works Director, Wade is the foreman. And then they handle water, storms, streets, park maintenance, and contracted wastewater. And then you have the engineering department, which has a city engineer and then engineering technician. Even though we're a smaller city organization, when you have a structure like that, it does cause issues where you have like two separate departments, even when you're in a smaller city like this. So then, analysis of comparable cities, Athala, Liberty Lake, Afraida, West Richland, Kalsah, and then all law. And they, and those cities have functions where essentially you have Public Works Department with two divisions, an operational division, and then an engineering division. And then this is a COVID time manager, where if you have stuff set up like we do, the issue is when it isn't a nice linear structure. You have the development-related tasks where that takes priority in the longer-term things, they tend to fester a bit. So that is the issue we have ahead of us. So there's a little, there's a recommendation here, and the best would be to just show you the map right here of this. So the plan, if you're all okay with this, let me know, is that, so when Paul retires, elevate Robert Gordon to a combination Public Works Directors at the engineer position, and then essentially merge the departments where you have two divisions. So I've talked with Wade about the concept of moving him from a foreman position to an operations manager position. Because right now, he hasn't been doing the performance reviews of field employees, Paul's been doing that. And that, that's a little weird considering the field supervisor is the one that really knows what's going on in the field, so that's just a little odd. And the concept of operations manager, we've had discussions with the Public Works Union, that would be taken out of the union, since that's like a leadership position. And the operations manager would be Wade, he'd answer to Robert. Public Works Director with the help, would be doing a lot of the long-term planning, pursuing grants, that's Robert Strong Sue, and then helping with engineering, and then we'd have an engineering division. And one of my big concerns is that Rob Enslie, who's our engineering technician, the amount of skill and work he provides is insane. He does a lot of brands engineering. How he picked up GIS is amazing, he's been doing the old GIS system, where I don't have to do that anymore, which is nice. So the idea is to elevate him from engineer technician to engineer manager, and then backfill the engineering tech position. And he has his EIT right now, which that's a designation when you're working toward becoming a P E, a professional engineer. But he's close to achieving that, so, and then that would help keep him here, so.
Okay, your conversations with Wade about this shift, how does he feel about, like, about that? And I hear what you're saying with how this works, but was there any sort of thinking that he was feeling like kind of next in line to take over Paul? Okay.
No, actually, actually, no, he figured we were just gonna recruit a house for it. So when I talked to him about doing operations manager, he seemed excited about his whole thing. This is why no one was expecting of him, because you run from a foreman to a manager. And I tell him, you know, we aren't gonna tie you to the office, he likes being in the field and stuff. But really, the thing is moving the performance reviews to him, since he knows how everyone's working. And yeah, he seemed very pleased with it, we presented it to the union, because we wouldn't even have presented it to you, you all, if they were against it. And they were supportive of it as well. So yeah, that's the idea we came up with. So the idea would be that whenever Paul would retire, which would be next fall, that Robert would elevate to that. In January though, we would elevate Wade to the operations manager position. And one of the things that we talked about with the union is that if we did that, we would also have a utility worker in the water division, just because we don't have enough staff to get the maintenance projects done in a timely manner. The Highland Park Neighborhood is a prime example, there's some lines up there that need to be replaced, but we've been struggling to get that done. So that you need three people to do that, and we have, a lot of times when we're about ready to get there, we only have two available, and that causes issues, so the crew would really help a lot. And Paul's been pushing for it for a while, so we would have a position as a general utility worker, and then Wade would run the whole operations side.
So I understood this correctly, Wade, you guys would be giving him, giving him some training on appraisal job?
Yeah.
The whole appraisal process and what's involved there?
Yep.
Many times that can be very difficult, to make this transition from a position of being a coworker, or to now doing the yearly appraisals or ongoing evaluation, so, yeah. I mean, probably goes without speaking, but I'm just, you know, some sort of special training perhaps, or?
Well, and. And I feel, well, we're seeing better since we're moving to a new insurance provider, they actually provide really good training.
Good for them.
Because that was the issue with CIAW, don't they have what you get what you paid for? You really got what you paid for with CIAW.
Oh, yeah, the company, yeah.
Yeah.
That's 2020.
Yeah, so, but it's in December when we're formally moving over to WCIA, but because we filed our intent, they allow us already to participate in trainings and so forth. And then, yeah, it's quite a bit different from what CIAW provided.
So like when the meter reader?
Yeah.
He, what position is he moving into, or maybe he's not moving in?
No, that was just a utility worker.
Okay.
That was a utility worker.
So it's a utility worker.
Yeah. Yeah, so with the utility worker position, it's basically working on the whole backlog, which has existed for a long time, and that's just.
So you have that free position?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean.
I do have a question about, so you were saying that we will need one more utility worker, so why are we waiting to the end or in the fall of 2020?
Well, the utility worker, the idea there is Sarah and I found enough money with that, where if you were all good with this plan, where we know where all the shuffleboard pieces are going, we would then work to recruit the utility worker now.
Okay.
My hope then is I don't want to be hiring an additional person when I am going over all the board pieces we're going with.
Got it, thank you.
So Mike, what's the process for your feeling comfortable with proceeding with this, is that?
Pretty much, pretty much, if I'm hearing negative comments from everyone right now.
These are always awkward.
Norma's supered above this, we'll continue on, this is something I was working with Harvey on quite a bit prior, because we were trying to figure out how to get that going.
Was there any staff feedback at all concerned, negative, or?
I mean.
Anybody concerned that we should know about?
The only concern or join was from Robert, because he was concerned that I wasn't gonna backfill engineer inside with a manager director. Because, you know, on its face, when you look at combinations of the engineer public works, well, I'm busy, I expect me to do that. A lot of the development work, which we've already been skillin' Rob on how we do that, review the playouts and all the submissions to turn it, we've been training Rob to do that, so that would fall off of Robert's play, which would be good, because that takes a lot of time.
Sounds good.
And then, any input or, what, feedback from the other side of the?
Well, I've talked to all the utility workers, they all like working for Wade. The concern that I heard frankly, when I mentioned Robert as Public Works Director, that you're concerned about how that would mesh with essentially utility worker culture, because, you know, being at, I used to be a utility worker when I was in college, and then it's completely night and day from doing engineering, so they felt a lot better once I said that, no, for all the field stuff, Wade would be supervising, and they felt a lot better, yeah.
Changes good too, sometimes.
Yeah, and Wade and Robert were both.
Yeah.
Do, as far as making the utility, new utility position happen, don't, I need to come to council next time?
Yeah.
For official people on that, to add a position?
Something that's a Allen.
I can't hire unless there's a position there, so you guys would have to approve that, right?
Yeah.
And then, so that's just gonna fit into one of those five categories?
Exactly, exactly. We were evaluating our revenues and expenses, we can fit it in water, so that's where that would come from.
Okay. So y'all have that message up there?
That she?
Hello, are you listening to her? If you could have that sent to Lisa by Friday.
But, but, yes, that's the plan, if you're all supportive of that, to add the utility worker ASAP after the meeting. And then Wade will elevate operations manager at the start of the new year, and then a kind of retirement of Paul. That would essentially be the shuffleboard pieces where Robert would become Paul, and then Rob would become Robert, basically.
And one becomes one.
Yeah.
And then, so this position that we would be creating would be entry-level utility worker? Or are we gonna try to like kind of advance it a little bit?
I think we kind of leave it a little bit open to see what we get, you know what I mean? We don't want to put it right in like the one or the two, because depending upon the applications that come in, we may get somebody that qualifies, you know, has their C D L, or, you know, so.
Yeah, you never know how the applicant pool is, I mean, when we backfilled Kevin Wolbert's position, and then Dennis Anderson got in, he had all the water service, wow.
Now, where did he come from?
He had his own company that did like water stuff. And actually, he operated the Christ Community Fellowship, and a couple of other smaller well systems around the valley.
After Paul retires, he takes with him a considerable amount of knowledge and expertise. Are we gonna have any sort of relationship with him in case we need to pull some information from him, or do we have a plan there?
Yes, we will.
We know where he lives.
Do we know his name, so? Yeah, we will, we will continue a handholding relationship with him, and that way they have the nickname for a project Rob's been working on is Paul GIS, which is basically making GIS a tribute feature classes, it's everything that's in Paul's hunt.
So they've been doing that of like once a week or something? Have they been sitting down and having conversations to go over like Paul's knowledge of like where things are that like either are or aren't documented? Like having around for him to just like, and he's been doing that for a little while?
He's been doing that.
He started there before.
He's been doing that for the last year and a half. And then he's also been driving around the utility workers to show them where various valves and things you may not know are anyway. So, yeah, so all that's being digitized to the best of our ability.
So my opinion is, I like this idea. I think this is one of those things that we've been looking for as a way of making, if everyone's in favor, obviously, we're not the players that are here every day. But if everyone's feeling good about this, I think this is a step in the right direction of us finding the efficiencies that we've been looking for. And being able to add some money and still provide the services that people need. And I think we've been doing that in other departments as well. So I, you know, that makes sense to me.
Well, I mean, the idea behind this is a good example of a merger we did about a year and a half ago, was when we merged the building department and the planning department to community development. And that's been great. So this follows in the same sphere.
Okay. Well, where's Paul's office now?
Paul's office is back here.
Is here? So like they would, Robert would still be here in the building? Does Wade have an office?
Wade's out of the shop. Okay, well, if anyone else has any questions, we'll work to get down the agenda, the addition of the utility worker position so we can begin to work towards this.
Unlike the plan?
Thank you.
Very thoughtful. Thank you.
Robert's talking about like helping.
Now, put it this way, now that we actually have a four-year mobility now, because that was actually starting to be a concern with both Robert and Rob, because they both want to go somewhere. But when you're in a smaller organization, it becomes a bit of a challenge. Okay, so I'm presenting this before you all. You can scroll down a little bit. Yeah, that's it. Just so you're all aware of this, because the game plan with the Southwest Subaru Trump line took a little bit of a turn. So I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of what's going on. So the last time I presented on this, we were looking at a couple of options. Basically, either working with the school district and like a lease for the truck, the lift station, redoing something into that effect. Since that timeframe, the school district has some other more urgent priorities that needs to deal with at the moment. So eventually, they're gonna acquire the land in the nearby area. But at the moment, no. And the thing was, this was holding up our design for the Trump line because you need to know where you're engineering to in order to actually engineer the Trump line. Since the last time we talked, this property is right on the Teal Road off of the January. That was owned by the Johnson family. They're out in the Baba. And since that time, Charlie Cohen acquired the county. So he now owns it. And he's been able to work with us essentially to split the property and then just get the part that we need. So because it's out in the county, the smallest we can do a lot of split to is about five acres. With the appraisal, it comes out to be about $175,000 for the five acre parcel. We had that in our game plan when we did the original capital facility plan and budget last year. So we can accommodate that. I just present this before you because it's a little bit of a change from what we were originally talking about for like a lease and an purchase, where now it looks like it just needs to be a purchase. And this is key to being done because as we're developing the engineering plans for a Trump line to go construction next year, you need somewhere to engineer it too because it'll go to the lift station. And then there is a sewer line that we already own that goes like north and south down Teal. Because we actually provide waste water services to Valley Londo. So the line that would come through Mike and Craig's property would basically meet up with that line right over here. And then it just goes right to the treatment plant. So this would be about $175,000. Charlie Cohen, he signed the MOU. I wrote up a property agreement. And essentially, what's gonna happen is that the next council needing this MOU, I would like just to go for approval mainly, mainly because there is a big box interest on Mike and Craig's property. And they want to make sure, they want to make sure we aren't messing with them like another municipal government may have done. So there are certain timelines they want to see or else they're gonna go elsewhere. And this is one of them. They want to make sure that, they want to know there's a commitment for the lift station. Then they want to know if the lift station's actually been like bought, that property, and then the engineering plan's done. So we're trying to move toward the MOU, get them to Charlie, and that all memorialized this month. That property agreement, when we acquire it, getting that done by November. And then the engineering, get the engineering done by next May. And those are the benchmarks. Then I'm trying to assess price so that way the big box wants to come here, which would be a good one. So.
There it is. Evening, we've mentioned a kind of need for additional water storage capacity as well as wells. How versatile would this property purchase be? Would there be any potential for anything along those lines? Would it be worth examining larger scope?
So that's actually interesting that you mentioned that because for the Trump line itself, the lift station, we actually only need three acres. But because the county's development regulations, the smallest we can split it to is five acres. And we're looking out there. But when we actually did the water right analysis, we said that's an area we could apply water rights to for a while. And we believe that additional two acres could be a site for a future well. So there is a potential to have multiple functions out there. So.
Do we have other land available for something like water storage? Because I imagine that would be fairly sizable.
Yeah, the thing is, is the city doesn't have that much land. So, and the areas where we're deficient with water storage is actually out both near the homestead development, near that Martin Airfield area, and then also this area as well. So where we put water storage, I think it's really gonna be determined by which development pops first. If the full stone creep development, Mike and Craig's property goes first, then we need to be looking at water storage in this area. If whatever's going on in Martin Airfield happens, which I have no idea because the parties are not communicating. So it's a little bit hard to be a mind breather on that. Then there would need to be additional storage out there. I think regardless, it's key for us to begin engineering though for the water storage. I'd say in this area, because we know regardless, there's gonna be development out here because it's an extent already. Hanging up to landowners and talks. So.
I guess I'm wondering, should we buy a larger section there? Or is it, or is it we can just get what we need later?
There are various deals that I can't believe to. Another party is working in where if we need additional land, I think we would be able to work some out via.
Being considered.
But my issue right now with other like party is if I had more time, I would just sit down and wait for them to do their thing. But unfortunately, because we have the timeframe with the sun use, I try to make sure, yeah, we don't lose them. So yeah, the MOU, this will go for a council consideration next meeting. And then Ree is looking at the property sale agreement I wrote down. And the idea is to get that through sometime in October so we meet their deadlines.
Please do that next week too.
And then this is just an idea that I want to throw out there for you all. So I'm not sure if you're all aware, but Sarah Kilgore, our finance director, she's actually leaving October 1st because she has a part-time job and she wanted to be a stay-at-home mom as well. So she's leaving. And with that, we are hiring a new finance director. But the thing is, we got a lot of stuff going on with the grant report them, the grant management, investment portfolio, all capital projects going on. So, and then as you all know from talking about BS budgets, we do have like breathing room because where Argo was essentially the 20% mark for the various funds, we were up over the 25% mark. And I'm doing a slow spun down of that. So the one kind of stuff, and I just want you all to think about it. And we'll allocate some resources behind that budget. When we see it, I want you to know what's behind it, is a part-time finance coordinator position. Basically to help with the grant report them, all the things to that effect, and then the quest to go software implementation. Just because since we're gonna be hiring a new person, that's a lot to learn. And then plus, it's already been a struggle doing the grant report them because we have a lot of the grants and stuff going on right now. And if we understand how to have them, then they said challenge is we're coming to more grants. So for sustainability of getting other people's money, that would be a good thing to have. So.
So this is a part-time, you said CPA required?
Yeah. And I'm open to suggestions for how to tweak it. But this is just literally some thoughts thrown together in a piece of paper. And we're gonna put some resources behind that budget. But I want you to know what we're thinking of is we're moving further along in the process.
What would the, yeah, do you know the page for the team?
Right now, I'm evaluating them at the moment. I just wanted to get this in front of you all.
That seems acceptable.
Yeah.
Like you said, Sarah, she's going to a part-time job?
In the private sector.
In the private sector?
Yeah.
I agree with Mike though. It's concerning having a new financial director come in who has a steep learning curve to learn the CPA's financial systems. And then take care of all the grant reporting and tracking and sorts. Of someone who's worked with grant reporting, it's a lot of work. You do a lot of data, you have to put it's very time consuming. And any delays could affect getting new grants in the future. And I want Mike to keep getting grants. A little selfish, but I don't want like human there when you're getting more grants and less. So it is going to probably be a cost, but it probably pay for itself in this grant.
For sure. I'm just wondering, I guess I'm trying to picture who I know that's a CPA that would want just a part-time six-hour. Do you have?
I mean, some of the thoughts, as I know of retired finance directors in central Washington, there would be a map pool search. And then look at what some other similar size. So these are, they have done that from time to time. There is stuff that exists like this. I thought it was.
It'll have to be CPAs who have their own business, but have some time.
Yeah.
To do a second session. How are the applications coming for the finance director?
I believe we have eight candidates. I believe there's one that doesn't like meet the minimum qualifications. There are several that don't have a lot of experience.
Are you even experienced in the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only one. I mean, there's many complexities to them. So we definitely will need some support for that person.
Wait, how long is that over?
Until filled.
Oh, good.
Yeah. We're, I'm scheduling interviews right now.
But Sarah's gone as of September 30th?
Right now. Yes. It's going to be a difficult season. You know, everybody's gonna have to pull their weight and pitch in so that we can.
I suppose we could bring her back to visit.
Well, it's tough. A lot of times you're gonna get two weeks' notice, you know, and then you're, by the time you find out that they left, you're able to put an ad in the paper, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's what life is, is the way it works.
Exactly. We'll survive. I've been for the similar position in Colfax. That when you bring in someone new, that would have definitely helped if there was.
Sure, yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
So.
I don't want to just get stuck in a speed doctor too long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, training two new people and such, I mean, those are, those just seem like two positions that would be even more work on existing staff to try to get them to be up to speed. But I also know that it's nothing that we can wait on. Together finance director up to speed and then bring out someone. But do, does the people, do they deliver coffee? I mean, are everybody gonna lie home? I guess what I'm looking at, I mean, I understand what you're saying. A retired person potentially, then I'm thinking, well, maybe they're not gonna be either as, okay, I didn't see what I was gonna say. But is 16 hours of a CPA, the same costs and time area a whole-time person with all the CPA? And how do you weigh those differences in having someone maybe for more hours?
I could, I could kill.
I think that's just the one thing. I mean, are we ready to have that?
Yeah.
Designation five.
Designation. Yeah. Next one is.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the, one of the last things that I have out here as well, and we don't really have to discuss this much. I just wanted to take a look at it because in past years, I personally have done that. It was very like top-down in that, in that a ton of discussion. But every year, we do a legislative agenda. That season is coming up again. So for reference, I attached what was in this year's agenda. So take a look at it. If you have any edits or things to add or delete, let me know. A couple of the big points that we're still vying for is for state to put more money in the Public Works Trust Fund because although they didn't sweep as much out as they traditionally sweep, they still swept money out. So that's not a good thing. At least they didn't sweep all money coming to it this year. They like swept about 35% of what was due to be paid to. The other big thing is economic development. So that building business ecosystem bill, which basically is like savings tax, tax increment financing, that got stalled again this last year. And really for us to reach our potential for economic development, given we're a border community, we really need that now because we're the only state in the country where tax increment financing is constitutionally prohibited. And then the other, and then the other thing is getting the multifamily tax exemption for folks and developers who are doing affordable housing and apartments that were in the place to all cities. Because right now, it's where you either have to be in a county above 100,000, a city in a fully planned county above 20,000, or a county C. And the thing that actually our legislators is to me, it makes no sense. Like in Woodland County, for example, because. Like in Woodland County, for example, because Colfax was the county C, they could have done that, and so could Pullman. But over here, because the county's not big enough, the city of Walwal can do that, but we can't. So that isn't really fair either. And then also, I believe there's some room to pursue appropriations for the wastewater treatment plant because that's going to be a very expensive future project. And then talking with the legislators at the connection event, they feel they're going to be able to get the appropriations, taking care of a wrap-up that see their endamps and requests made of them this last year. But it got caught up in minor negotiations and got thrown out at the last minute. But they think they can get through next year. So that's some of the things at play for next legislative year. But if you have any suggestions or edits or additions or deletions, please let me know so we can get it adapted by a reasonable number.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Sounds good.
So next item on the agenda is a table on the interview process.
Yeah, so we just kind of want to suggest that you go along the process. We've recently gone through two interviews for an elected position appointment and will be doing another one the end of this month. So before we do that one, we thought we'd ask those of you who have been on both sides of that, what your opinion was, if there's anything you have suggests, suggestions for changes or what we thought worked or good, what we thought didn't, that sort of thing.
Too long, like the evenings. I wish that there was a way to vet ahead of, like I'm thinking back to March, I remember when it went half 10 or something, like that just felt long to me. And so I was recalling back when Commissioner Duncan passed away in December. And then, I mean, that was up to the Republican Party, so it was a little different process. But the Republican Party basically like vetted however many applicants and then gave the top three to the commissioners for them to choose from. And so we don't have that, so we got all 10. And part of that, at least, I don't know what, I mean, we know what our ordinance says on how this process works, but in the past, at least since I've been here and the several people that we've appointed, and Lauren's been here longer, like there haven't been that many applicants, so it wasn't an issue. And now we're...
You're fairly eligible, they have to interview.
Right. And so like what, what, if anything, do we want to change to make it be that it's not such a long night for everybody involved?
Can we shorten the answer time? Be a lot of answer time? Because...
Does it have to be a meeting?
Yes.
Have we changed that? I mean, I mean, that's fine, but like can it be a workshop where we go through and say, okay, these are the ones that we want to push through to the final round? Or a special meeting, something that like can start at five or six in the morning?
It would have to be a special meeting. We could change the timeframe.
And are we still interviewing everybody? Just start earlier or use that workshop to...
Either, either do something that would make, have the special meeting or workshop or whatever, have the big group of people. So that at a meeting, it's just looking at the last three. But that's part of it's just us. It's not like being able to definitely delegate that to like the Republican committee. For instance, like they did at the Christmas tribal, so that's what I'm just...
I was going to suggest here, like, one challenge we had is extended responses to our questions. And having, say, a suggested time, I think, even if we didn't enforce it, I mean, we could say, we'd suggest, you know, taking less than, less than five minutes for this question, or less than two minutes.
Get a timer.
I mean, I think that that involves just introducing the process a little bit better to the elements. I mean, it was very startling to me that there was nothing about how the process was going to go. I mean, I've been on this side several times. But to have been on that side and not have like a, welcome to this, this is the number of questions, this is the time that you have.
I think, I can't think clearly about other times that we've done it, but it did seem like we were more abrupt than usual in the introduction.
Well, I always, like back in March, Harvey was, Harvey did that for all of those. And we made sure that there was that process. And that's what we always, for the other interviews, like for instance, the LA Transit, we were having a general manager, that was me, that we all kind of chimed in ahead of the questions. Also the same thing about how the process was going to go, it was just a little warmer. But again, those were an all-day interviewing that was scheduled every kind of hour. So it wasn't this, there's so many people, we need to try to get through it, like.
One other thought I had was that it seemed a number of applicants had prepared something, but they never got the chance to kind of present themselves.
Because what they submit, you have to have it be equal to everybody. And so their submission has to be their application.
Well, one thought I had was, you know, we could set a, I don't know if this is even legal, but if we set like kind of a set amount of time for each question, then kind of have like a free three minutes. Like you've got three minutes to talk to us, just, just talk about whatever you want, any strengths, any follow-ups that you want. I think that would probably be really appreciated if it's allowable.
Yeah, as long as we do it for everybody.
Right, yeah.
And it's allowable.
And I would think just if we could integrate that into the process.
So a couple of comments, you know, I guess, and I'll just lay it out here. I think, I had not seen those questions before they were handed to us. Was that, was that the same with everyone?
Well, that was the same in March, but...
What's that?
That's kind of how it's supposed to be.
So we can't look at the questions?
I think that they could, though. Right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I got those and I, and I'm, and don't anyone take what I'm about to say personally, but about, I think those questions could have been cut down maybe to five or six. Some of them, the structure of them was a little odd where there was...
Kind of confusing wording in some of it.
There's a question in there that, you know, basically could take, you had like a four-part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was a little, it was, and once again, I'm just being, I'm just, this is just, you know, letting it go here. But I, I'd actually prepared some behavioral questions before, but I didn't want to use them because, in other words, instead of, do you understand the structure of city government, how it currently, you know, whatever? I would think that if we could vet those questions, and once again, I'm saying ask everyone the same questions. But there are some behavioral questions of the behavioral interviewing right now that is, tell me about your life and where you've had success. You know, some of the, instead of just, do you understand what the rainy day fund is for? More of a question, you know, I have four or five of them that I have prepared that maybe go deeper into how they would be as a leader, deeper into how they get along with people, deeper on how they handle crises, how are they handling success, how they, you know, whatever. There's a couple there that kind of get into, and they're psychologically designed more or less, I would call it that, where you, how do they, how do they think on their feet, you know? And how do they process the question and whatnot. But I'm just, and literally, you could have three or four city government questions, you could have two behavioral questions of some sort that we all agree that we like or don't like, you know? And maybe cut the, cut the questions down to five or six from...
We went from 12 in March to 10 last time.
And we had some long-winded individuals that, you know, went on and on and that kind of threw things off a bit, too, and others not so much. And so, you know, it's one of those things, anyway, I just, I would kind of like to have a chance to vet the questions, I think, as a community of council members. I don't know if that's appropriate.
No, I think that's appropriate. Yeah, I mean, because back in the day, we didn't have this kind of structure before. Like I'm remembering...
Keep it inside trouble.
Yeah, no, I mean, so this all happened in January when we went through that process. We'd gone through Proppman for hiring Mike and Troy, and then we used Proppman to get LA Transit and seeing the structure for that. And, I mean, I like structure, so I loved that. And so when they were hiring Greg Tompkins at the county level, I reached out to them to get, to have their questions and worded it to Mike and Lisa. So those were in March when we interviewed, were a lot that the county had come up and like adapted them. But that just gave us that uniformity. Because prior to that, like I remember one where Marge was like, are you a family man? And Amy was like, uh, and you know, like we have to, just still be asking like legal questions. And so I liked that we had them ahead of time, but I think this is our chance to kind of define that process. And or, I mean, obviously we can't do exact same questions every time, but I liked at least the questions that we asked of the council candidate in March. They seemed more applicable to me than some that were elsewhere.
So, I don't know, yeah. Let me go through and vet them, whittle those 10 down to five or six structural and maybe add one or two, what kind of a person are they? Because it's interesting, you go through, you look at their resumes, you basically take all that, put it in a meat grinder, throw it away, and then just ask these robotic questions, you know what I mean? So, you know, and I understand you can't, I guess I didn't understand the boundaries of, they have supplied a resume. It's inappropriate for us to ask a specific question about work history during the interview?
Well, no, you just have to ask everybody. Or, well, I guess, I think that's what I like about what Michael was saying, that if you have a few minutes to be able to say, this is my summary of myself and why I'm applying for this position, that kind of reminds you because you haven't been reading 10 resumes and you're not going to remember every detail.
On the other hand, I agree completely. On the other hand, the structure is good, and I hate structure. But the structure is good because I could have, I could find something in a document they supplied and I could, you could get a little brutal. And you would not, and I mean that in a, in an assertive type of way. What I mean, you could say, I noticed that the file you supplied had the wrong file name on it for the job of the City College Place, were you not paying attention to? You could get, you could get pretty, you could get pretty tight with people. And I'm not sure you'd want to do that, but then you would not be evenly, and that, and and your perception of whoever could be colored by the type of penetrating question you ask based on work history, experiences. But, and that's where the behavioral questions a lot of times come into play where... Yeah, it's in-between land a little bit.
I think it's a good idea to get your input on the questions. I think that's fabulous.
Yeah.
The timeframe for that is an issue.
Sure, we take 10 down to four.
Is there any post-position for the weekend?
Applications are due on the 13th and we're going to do interviews on the 24th.
Wow, okay.
I'll bring my shaving kit.
Seriously? This is all secret?
So you have those questions prepared? I mean, not a trick. Will we have a chance to look at those?
Well, apparently we're going to need to.
No, no, I'm just...
So, yeah.
That's why we answered suggestions, so.
The problem is, we discuss everything in an open public meeting.
Yeah.
This is where I run into the issue. Everything we discuss is open and public, recorded, put on YouTube. Anybody can come listen.
Right.
All of that, put on board docs. So, but yet, you don't want the questions out there for the candidates to have these prepared scripted answers.
So we could, we can make a suggestion, approve the 10 down to five, four, five, and then several of us could supply behavioral questions and you could decide whether or not, and just, you could just throw it in there. We don't have to approve. And these questions that I...
Even if you guys have suggested questions, you can email them to me, not to each other.
Right, and not say that you have to accept them or not.
The three of us can review and...
Yeah, and throw them all out or say, yeah, we like one or...
But we can't, I mean, this would, is there any bright area under an executive session of being able to discuss that type? It's only some sort of personnel issue or whatever, it can't be... Yeah.
So it's, with your guys' level, it makes it a little bit more difficult for that kind of thing. I know that Melody had a suggestion that she sent to me that she wanted because she's not here tonight. She suggested that not only you guys having the questions, but the candidate have a set of the questions in front of them. The only thing I worry about with that is that they would be reading ahead instead of concentrating on their answer for the question that you've...
And you'd have to get a hold of them, and if they kept one and shared them with somebody else that's coming up subsequently, that was not fair.
Well, yeah, it'd have to be just one copy on their table or you'd have to sit there.
We could post it on the PowerPoint as we're asking the question. Just like, here's this next question, it's up there if you'd like to read it.
I don't know if they're all their head and car.
Or I could, I know I was, I was trying to come up with a way that this work, I could have like basically a little flip book of, here's the question. Please don't flip it over until...
You know, but part of the mental, but part of it is getting a question cold.
Yeah.
Part of it is, it's kind of like when...
Being on your feet.
Yeah, that, part of that's how it's short, yeah, part of that is that. You know, it's like, you know, this is the question, you need to process it, you need to go with it.
Because in your guys' positions, you're going to be confronted with off-the-wall questions in public that may or may not be your qualifications.
Well, I'm all for, I don't know, the mayor, I'm all for cutting the 10 down maybe to do a little trimming and then maybe a couple of behavioral questions and just get an eight timer.
So you don't want to change anything about the process of, you just want every candidate, like if we have 15 candidates, you want to do them at seven o'clock on Thursday?
Well, I think we change the time if you wanted to, but, so by law, and that's, thank you for that. So if, if 50 people applied, we'd have to interview all 50? There's no...
If they qualify, if they met the qualifications.
If they met the qualifications.
So we need something in an ordinance that...
But we could, we could, you know, we don't have to all do it in one meeting. If there was something like that, we would end up scheduling an open public meeting for an all-day session for this day and this day and this, you know, whatever.
And you know in HR, the halo effect, your best interview is the last one you talk to.
The first and the last.
You know, the, I'm just saying, whenever I'd interview six or seven people, that last one was, you know, that was...
I just want to go home, let your hype.
I can certainly put it on the agenda for the 10th meeting to change the time of the meeting for the 24th.
We don't know how many applications we're going to have, but should we still just start at six and call it a day?
I don't see why not.
Is it too late because we've already posted that the interviews would be on, oh, no, weren't at seven?
6:00 AM it is.
Perfect. Can you bring like coffee and donuts?
Don't let me have control of this.
So, so I'll have, I'll have a change proposal on the agenda.
So how will that work for staff and Reed and everybody?
Maybe go home or there.
Well, maybe.
As far as staff, nobody will need to be here except the three of us.
Right, so staff authority with a 6:00 o'clock meeting.
It's fine, I mean, probably somebody needs to check with Reed just to make sure she does need to be here, but...
The nice thing, and I'm not saying to do this, the nice thing about seven is you have a high, if people don't work eight to five, you have a higher, I think, probability of people not having something that causes them not to be able to make it, you know? Six is probably okay, I just, 5:30 is a little bit of a stretch for, you know, sometimes.
It's a rush for me to get here and come off of work.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I usually spend like, you know, 15 to 30 minutes writing notes afterwards.
It's, it's a risk, but I think six-six is great. And sure, sure number of questions, we'll be out of here in 20 minutes.
And the time and the time will explain.
A better getting.
So that we don't have the years of 20-minute answers.
Two minutes, two minutes per answer and we'll give a few minutes and to say anything else that you have to say.
You know, each one of these interview processes takes on a life of their own, though, you know? It's one of these things, it's, it's, there's something, there's some funk in the water or there's something going on and it's too warm, it's too cold, it's all the personalities and you never, but, yeah, we do the best we can.
Although, you know, so with all that being said, I do got to say, but even though I've been the one probably impacted both, it's nice that so many are wanting to participate.
Finally. Are we the only applicant?
Yeah, and so is Natalie. And I just think it's great that we're, that we have citizens that are wanting to have engaged. And that actually probably is a great reflection on you all because it's becoming a place they want to be.
Yeah, as a corollary to that, it'll be interesting, this will be the third one. It will be interesting to see how many people want to be a council because we will have a third time now that you've had multiple, perhaps, people that are interested in because it's a, it is a successful city.
Yeah. And what does this do for Norma, who's on the ballot in November? Because this position is up at the end of December.
Right. It's a little bit complicated. Right now, Norma needs to try to get a port... a court order to have her name removed from the ballot.
This one's done.
If she does not get her name removed from the ballot and she wins the election, she will then need to decide whether she wants to be the mayor or the council member.
Right.
If we all are assuming that she chooses to remain mayor, then we would need to reappoint whoever we appoint as the council member.
That's right.
Or then have the option of going through another round.
Oh, so if we hire a duck.
We had this almost before.
I'm just thinking.
Well, that's right, I remember that now. Back, yeah.
So if she stays on the ballot, we keep our options open. If she, if she doesn't, whoever we appoint would be appointed until the next election cycle, even though that position technically would be a four-year, it would only be a two-year appointment, and then in the election cycle for a two-year term, and then in the election cycle for a four-year term.
Because they can't get on the ballot. They will be.
They like to get on the ballot.
They'll be named, but then they are, they're renamed to no position because, yeah, wow.
Right, so if someone had filed against her and was opposing her, that person could allege that like potentially like apply for this position.
That's right.
Right. And like that would be fine. With Melissa.
Absolute power of, absolutely.
Yeah, Jerry applied against Melissa, and then we appointed him, right?
I'm holding that one back.
What?
There's a lot going on here.
Sorry.
No, it's, it really is complicated. And.
Yeah.
I've been talking with the county elections office, the county elections office has been talking with the state, and the, the suggestion that came through all of that, that would make everything go smoother, would be if Norma's able to get herself off the ballot. So we'll see.
But I still, so then whoever we appoint now would go for two years?
We would appoint them until the next election. It would be just like the appointment that we just did for mayor.
So it doesn't matter that her term ends in December?
Right, right.
Heaven forbid if Norma was challenged with a write-in and lost. You'd want to keep all options open.
Because I don't have.
Strategy.
Yeah, just saying.
So.
All righty.
So because of the fact, the reason the appointment would be through to the next election is because the vacancy came open after the closing of the filing time.
Yeah.
I like this, write-in candidate. That could be.
Never going to happen, never going to happen.
You know?
So it gets three write-in votes and they win.
So, so we're working on getting that court order.
Yeah.
And so we're sending you questions, if we have any.
Yes. Send us, give us. Send them to me, then we'll set up a little meeting, and then.
And you know, you heard of no obligation, if you get these, you know, I mean, if you hate them all, just, you know, I'm just saying, we can, yeah.
We like the behavioral questions, because A, it makes the person think, and B, you can kind of know whether, I mean, you know whether they're going to mesh.
Yeah.
And whether we're going to, because we've been very fortunate for a long time to have a council that works well together. And.
No.
We would like to not ruin that, especially from the staff perspective. So, and that's what we do in our staff interviews as well. And I think we've done pretty good hires.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But we do behavioral, we even, when we hired for De Cherie, we had one of the ladies who on paper was very good fit. She walked in and the first question, she goes, oh, it's that kind of interview.
Oh.
And we knew instantly she wasn't going to mesh.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Is that an option?
Well, yeah, that hire can really make for a toxic environment, and that just causes all kinds of stress and mental health issues.
No one needs high school 2.0.
No. I like Lauren's suggestion, though, of having the fewer questions and a couple of behavioral mixed with some of the other. I like that.
So we'll review the questions, maybe, let's try seven this time, you think?
Seven total.
Yeah.
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 And then a better introduction at the first.
Why not six, because there's six askers?
Ooh, there we go. Oh, let's go six.
That's good.
So you each ask one question. I like that. So go six questions.
This one says it's a four-part.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
I'm looking at the questions, I'm like, I'm the most unlucky person on this council right now.
What did you think?
It is a four-part.
I've received one so far.
Okay.
Yes.
I got the longest ones.
But if it's anything like the last two times, most of them come in the last two months.
Sure.
So the 12th and 13th will be when we, when we know.
Okay.
But we'll set it up, and if you guys send us the questions, we'll get together and check it out, and then I'll, I will put the questions in the executive portion of the cabinet.
Cool.
How's that?
Love that.
And then we can put them on Facebook.
And how much do you mean, all of you all have, when you get the resumes and the questions, you're reading through all of them? Is that correct? So you already have all those basic comprehension ideas about them already?
Okay. And all that's in the, well, the question answers I put in the public view, just so the public can see.
Yeah.
You know, but the resumes and stuff, I keep in the executive portion, so.
And they'll do a thing to change the time?
Yes. Change the time, then we'll, so the explanation will be a better introduction to the process. Two-minute time limit for questions with a three-minute answer of whatever, you know. Three minutes sell yourself at the end. So, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Making it better and better. It's good.
Trial and error.
Yeah. Refine it.
So the next.
We appoint more people than we elect.
So the last item on our agenda tonight, she was stuck.
Oh.
And I'm like, yeah.
She's going to take her back.
Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Okay, last item, uh, other workshop discussion.
Yes. So, the Association of Washington Cities is having their Cities on Tap event in Walla Walla on the date that would be our October workshop. So, it's basically their new, new branding for their regional meetings. And so it's assumed, for the most part, that most of you want to attend that.
That's the first I heard.
And so we need to make a decision if you want to, basically you've got three options for the October workshop. Either cancel it altogether, and all of this would be put on the next, the 10th meeting. So either cancel it altogether, change the date of it so that it doesn't conflict, or keep it the same. But if you canceled it, then we just move those topics into the administrative reports sections of a regular agenda meeting.
I'm all for just changing the date. I'm thinking as we get closer to the budget, as we get down to these, is a workshop needed, do you think, Michael, in October, or how do you know?
I mean, I, I think for October, we could incorporate the department head proposals as refining it into presentations on the October 8th.
Oh, okay.
You don't think that would make it too long in the meetings? I remember that would be kind of.
Yeah, but I already did a third of the, this meeting. I, I got rid of the introduction part already, so.
And so my other question was, I had asked about changing the November workshop because that's election day. That was, I mean, it was 75 months ago, that we had the last couple of years, the work, like a meeting or workshop were on election day, and it's been super distracting to sit here and try to watch like what's going on. I mean, I don't know that there's anything really big this year, but three or four of us are on the dial. So that would be my only thing, is if we're getting rid of October and potentially November, unless we're not.
Do you really want to sit on this, like, what's the idea?
Well, no, but I had to go to the party late last year. I don't want to be late.
Oh, my.
It was a party.
I'm in your party.
No, I was in for the last couple of years. I mean, I think that was even in 2016, we were sitting here like constantly refreshing and going like, what's happening in country? But we, I mean, I just feel like on those nights, we're not paying attention to what's going on. So, I mean, it could be, I mean, it's fine, we can do it. I just, I floated that out to Mike and Harvey a few months ago when we talked about changing the August one.
So for the October meeting, you're okay with skipping it?
I would be okay for skipping the October one. For the, for the November one, I'm going to make note for myself, because with that one, I would suggest if we want to shift it away from the election night one, I would send out a doodle poll for that one. But, but, but October, I think we could get away with pushing it on the, between the two councils.
Then why don't we just move October also? Like instead of trying to shove it onto other, I mean, that's what I don't understand. I mean, I like the workshops because they feel, I mean, this is just my opinion, I'm not saying this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the workshops because they start earlier, we don't go as late.
That's true.
And the meetings are just kind of quick. And so I'm not opposed to trying to find another.
We can just kick it the next day, Wednesday.
Wednesday or the day before, I mean.
Mondays are always tough.
Or Mondays.
I mean, sometimes they are for, they're always tough for me.
I, I, yeah, I mean, to me, days where I'm most open are Wednesdays and Thursday could potentially work that first week in October.
What it works on good.
Because by then, farmers market will be done.
Farmers market over, but, oh, Thursday's at seven. You could do November 7 and October 3.
Yeah.
It'd be Thursdays.
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah, I'm open the Thursdays.
Do Thursdays work for you?
No, yeah, I don't, yeah. Something to make them along, but we'll, that, yeah, that will, sounds good.
First week, the first Thursday of the month?
Yeah.
For October and November, that I can give you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put that on our September agenda as well, actually.
Yep.
Does, I mean, does that at least, I mean, I don't want to miss the workshop. I would appreciate it.
Okay.
That we have it out whenever we did.
And if we have a full agenda, we can always.
Yeah.
Get out of here in.
Yeah.
An hour or less. I have just one last, are we getting posted or?
Uh, yes, that's the last.
So one comment about active speakers. We've had a couple of incidences here lately that I wonder, we're not, it's not recording, and I understand that we need to record these meetings. Is there any process where we can keep these, can we keep the speakers off until we begin, or is there, is there a problem with turning them not being on if it's recording at 7 o'clock, or, what I say, sometimes some personal information is being shared and it echoes out.
So what I'll start doing is I will start keeping the whole thing, the whole system off until we're ready to start the meeting. Usually I just turn it on and test and make sure everything works.
I've been doing that for a hundred years.
I'll do that, and then I'll turn it off, and I'll turn it back on when I'm ready to start the recording.
Yeah, there were some personal comments here the last couple of times that about medical conditions and things, and it was kind of, it was just one of these things that was a little awkward, and I thought, you know, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
All righty.
Anything further? I guess we're done.
We have one more.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good meeting, these are really.